That's.
No, you're good.
Just, yeah.
Give me the fact.
Sunny now.
That was during.
During Saturday, actually during. While during the readings during the mass. Church was pretty funny.
Kind of grouped in a few times. This is the last time.
You know, close my mouth. It's been raining so.
Somebody was.
I want to get me this.
Well, yeah, I think. White.
Oh, you're well equipped tonight.
Oh, yeah.
No. I've been on the night. I'm not going to say that I like.
Yeah, very happy.
Okay.
Get four.
Fantastic.
Shot landing on the car.
Very, you know, very fast we're down there. I would actually look for them, but then go there.
Right, it's.
What are their things? Go ahead and do so.
Last year, there's like a half an hour. Like everyone's finished.
That was Jeff.
Sure. But then. It's six o'clock. I hope we don't have any issues here. We'll try our best. I'll call to order the Wabash. See consult meeting for.
Dance. On the mission. He didn't respond to the justice.
For being here, we don't anticipate a guest speaker. Do we have any public comments? Um, if you'd like to make a comment about anything that's not on the public hearing, please do go ahead and come right up to the podium. I know we have some online too. Just state your name and your residence for the record and go ahead and share a couple of minutes with council if you'd like. Anybody online can do the same if you'd like to?
Not yet. Oh. Oh, not yet, not yet. He's he's part of the administrator's report.
Wonderful. I'm glad to hear it. Uh, all right. Anybody online who's just make a public comment? If you haven't done so before, just unmute yourself and go ahead and state your name for council and share your thoughts with us. All right, I'm not hearing any of you online. So with that, any changes or additions to the agenda by staff or members of council? Okay, I don't have a presentation. We had quite the interesting weekend, so um. I cannot thank our local fire response enough for being there uh minutes, it seems like after a call was made on our building. We are very lucky, very, very lucky. Nobody was hurt. We started to kick ourselves for not being there, but in the aftermath, we're really glad nobody on our team was hurt. We're super glad nobody in the response was hurt and just so incredibly grateful. We are really very, very lucky. We think we'll definitely rebuild because we don't think there's any structural damage. There's a lot of of smoke and very little damage, so we'll keep you posted, but um the plan is to get back to business and in the meantime, probably find a location temporarily so we can serve folks. Um got a lot of cases being delivered to my house today, so it's going to keep on happening. Um, so it just was a a worst nightmare and I used to talk to Chad uh breaker about not wanting anything to ever catch fire on Main Street because we have some of the buildings that couldn't and I have another building, so we were just glad we were separate and that we didn't uh affect anybody else's property. And yeah, like I said, we're so so happy no one was harmed. Um, yeah. And I really appreciated the administrative report. There's a lot of exciting celebrations. I want to steal Caroline's thunder and thanks Ryan for the ambulance report. I had trouble opening it, but I if anybody else from council did, let let's stop. No, I was just gonna try again. Uh, I think it was my computer, but thanks for everybody for a lot of good activity. We got a great grant to to uh celebrate. Thanks to the public works team, so lots of good stuff in the administrative report. Yeah, and uh do we have committee reports for utilities?
Uh, we do. Uh, we utilities met yesterday. Um, the main thing I wanted to point out is that we voted to raise uh water and sewer rates by four percent. Um, the accountant kind of has a sun track to do four percent every year to to keep up with things we have to do. Um. If anyone's interested how that affects your invoice, uh, we do have numbers and illustrations that you can get in touch with us and you can see how what exactly you're talking about as far as costs. Um. And the the main reason that, you know, we were voting to do this is because there's so much future infrastructure that we're planning for right now. Um, just to give you a perspective, um. You know, this this extra four percent of the revenue, we're guessing it's gonna increase our total revenue by like forty four thousand just for the year. And so aside from all the the future planning, like uh for the sewer plant out there and like we have to get rid of the reed beds. That's like in the next five years, that's going to be just a daunting uh task. Um, but we just had two things totally unexpected come up. Uh, number one, a compactor went out at the sewer plant. Um, so that's thirty six thousand five hundred dollars that we didn't know we had to spend. Um, we have to fix that. And then also, as a result of the bridge replacement on Grant, we have to move a water main that actually runs. It's like attached to the bridge. Um, and that comes with like a hundred and sixty thousand dollar Christ Day, um, which we were kind of planning on a bridge replacement in twenty twenty seven, I think, or just far out. Um, but it's gotta happen next year now, so. Um, we just trying to keep up with expenses and um have to vote it for utilities. Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. Uh, we had students just do something at uh twenty second of our rallies. I'll want to give perks to it because you want.
What's that?
Share perks too if you want.
Okay. Um. For parks board, we welcome some new members, uh Linda Oden and Bill K. Joint. Uh, we're thankful to have them for sure. Um. Part of the FEMA thing, we're trying to uh get a new skateboard park. Um, so we updated the park board on the plans for that. Uh, the idea is that we are going to be setting it up behind field lawn at the athletic complex if everything goes through. Uh, we updated them. Uh, the Eagle Basin Park Equipment uh Project. Um, Caroline and Tony and I are working on some grant funding with that. And then um we updated them about the uh baseball field leveling issues. Um, we actually had a meeting this morning. Not with Dave Burstand. If there's a plan in place, we're working with uh the youth youth baseball association right now. And uh when we can get in there and try to fix it. Street Commission. Um, we started the conversation about the one-way traffic and bus unloading that takes place on Pembroke, Bailey and Lawrence. Uh, the new tool cat got approved um for that one-year rotation that we are keeping up with. And uh we've updated the street commission on all of the road driving coming up this year. So.
Super. Thank you, Ryan. Uh, we're.
We're throwing it back. Um. Their Thursday, their Tuesday, January to January twenty first. Uh, quite a few bills we did not meet in December, so quite a few bills kind of getting caught up with that. Uh, we said goodbye to Dusty Liston, our um s- uh CDO rep. We're gonna move to uh Kathy Ederson being our rep now on a two-day-a-week basis. So um it just works out better for us. Kathy's the one that helped us institute the housing committee and a whole bunch of different things early on, so excited to have her more than we had before. Um. Discussion about uh master developer for the Highway sixty um reroute project and we think probably a little too far out to make this discussion, like those discussions yet. Um. Couple of the things that got kind of accomplished while Dusty was here was USDA grants, so that's our funding for revolving loan. Um, she worked to get letters of uh interest for that throughout the community and we're done with that, so that's going to be submitted.
It was, yeah.
Yeah. And uh talked about burying the the electrical service in the alley where the new uh apartment building is going to be. And we've realized that we'll be able to bury it for the project, but probably not for the balance of the of the alley. There's just no money for that. There's no money out there. Uh, we talked about um phase one environmental studies done for the um that Highway sixty reroute project. And we're going to do phase two, and so we're studying session about that now to get that funded. And then, did you want to talk about our trip or?
You can.
Uh. Caroline orchestrated a trip to uh La Crosse for a project that they did. It's a seventy acres site. It's a recovery site from an old tank farm down in the river. Uh, it was below flood plain. Um, so much of what we're kind of facing at the Highway sixty project, the old um athletic field complex there, they face down there. Um. So they brought in Phil, they used Phil from the river dredge. Dredge material as well. Um, they've got out of that seventy acres. They're going to develop thirty acres. Um. High-density housing, not a major highway coming through there, but um much of the same challenges that we had. Um, the 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 project is going to be gorgeous. The properties that they have done already are just outstanding, so. Um, that was really helpful, very interesting. Um. Even though it's in Wisconsin, very a lot of things are kind of you know, mirror what we're we're having trouble with or working with. So thanks a lot, Ed.
Yeah, really, which are very nice to for the story. You know, it's a fifteen-year art story arc for them too. Starting with the city, you know, piecing together parcels that were, you know, certain brownfield and chant more challenging mirrors. Um, so just that foresight to trudge forward and then I thought it was interesting. Caroline, the boss functions on the project as a sort of specialized project manager and, you know, kind of spoke to the issue of many administrations, including many, many of the professional staff, see the cross and having different different talents to apply to get a big project like that. Um. Realized, so very good. So it's all could have been there. It was really well done.
So thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, thanks for the region. All right, ambulance commission have any updates for us, Ryan? Got your report? Plan commission?
I didn't need. Next meeting is next month, uh next Tuesday, sorry.
Sounds good. All right, so then uh we would have our administrative report.
Okay, so um Jeff, do you mind coming forward? Um.
I'll see you.
Today, we are celebrating um Darren's ten-year anniversary as fire chief. Thirty-six years as a volunteer firefighter and twenty-five years as um an EMT. And I know that Jeff has known Darren a long time. Um, and I think I just my comments about Darren are you will never meet someone more passionate about emergency response than Darren. And he's incredibly knowledgeable and all the departments, police, fire, the county, um. You know, they all really respect him and um he does a great job working with everyone. And so Jeff, can you share a little bit about Darren and his trajectory as fire chief and
Sure.
firefighter?
Um. First off, a couple of years ago, uh my daughter got married and I needed a little help. Darren's one of my helpers to uh give my speech, leaving my husband off.
Come on up, Darren.
Karen reached out, offered me to say some words about one of the Wabash Fire Department nerves. We had a couple of milestones. Chief Darren Shealy. Darren will have thirty-six years on the fire department this year and ten years of those as being fire chief. Throughout Darren's career, he had all numerous positions, firefighter, captain, assistant chief, and now chief. Darren's secretary of the association, he has helped out with the fire prevention by going to WK school and saving those teaching on fire safety. He's a chairman for numerous different committees and of course, he's always helped over there at Chicken Barbecue. Has a train attended numerous training seminars and conferences. I feel Darren has earned a lot of respect from the members of our department by having open mind and listening to suggestions made by the members. A few years ago, we needed a proper truck. Instead of going with a brand new one, we decided to go with a used one. Saving the city a considerable amount of money. A couple of years ago, we did the same thing and we replaced our ladder truck. We purchased a used one, again, saving quite a bit of money. Um. Help you. Darren has also worked with Excel Energy for getting equipment in case of an emergency incident. D and R grants, well, they fireman equipment and recently Wabash County to get granted durable for water rescues and has already come handy three times. Being chief is not directing us at fire calls, but there are numerous different meetings, helping with the fire prevention, taking calls in public, getting permits, being the state for the ISO rating to keep our insurance rates fall. Keeping records for equipment, testing, taking care of details, policies for insurance and numerous other things. We have issue with space for all, all order equipment in order to make new one rough. Darren's instrumental in addition done to this fire station and also getting the proper permission to defi- to disintoxify the station. Even though Darren was way ahead of calls, he is the person who can handle it. Thank you, Darren, for your service.
Knowing nothing about emergency response, so I think we could all say the same about you. You've been a teacher and a mentor to all of us. Thank you.
Ryan's extraordinary. Thank you so much, Darren. I can also say, even just for this recent term events, it's not the first time I've ever listened about how kind you are and it is it is a odd experience for me to see a call coming to you because it usually isn't the news, but your kindness and empathy for everybody involved, including your team is really really a big part of it. We appreciate and we appreciate that too.
So just wanted to note that um we have a couple of um uh posts going out, but Liesel Knox's five years with the library and Tina Cook couldn't make it today and she's celebrating five years with the Wabash shot ambulance service and I have kind of just notes on all the different ways they they all contribute um to the team. And then from my other report, um, you know, mainly just I continue to keep everything on track with all the grants and keep pushing. Um, Emily and I also met with Bigelow Homes and they of Alma about some land that Bill owns. Um, and then the twenty twenty-four audit is complete and went well. Um, and we had one thing that we need to address, which is timestamping invoices. Um, but we worked really hard on keeping close track of the unprecedented number of grants and loans that we process this year. Um, and then for the apartment project, I've gotten questions on that. Um, we're hoping to close on the property in mid-March and the final developers agreement will come back before you all, hopefully in March, so. That's where that's at. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Karen. Uh, on our consent agenda, we have a resolution adopting the Wabash County Hazard Mitigation Plan. We have the twenty-five, twenty-six fair contracts. The resolution and then the resolution eleven twenty twenty-four for to execute sale of grandparents' barn and the transfer site properties. Uh, to approve of posting for a full-time paramedic. To accept resignation of part-time EMT Austin Burton Refill position. The legalness of the city's grant for application toward uh the flood mitigation, which only could take care of if we were able to fund into that. The ground pump contract, the tool cat, we purchased it earlier. Talked about our January minutes, our February warrants, approval of consumption of display license. I forget. Thank you for welcoming Phase Law and Felix. Uh, excuse me, the A here and and St. Felix. And one more item, the gambling card application for a couple of raffles at St. Elizabeth's and there's a top in the base wall. We have a motion to uh approve the consent agenda.
What is it, Mo?
James first, Tim second. Anything other discussion, questions? All's in favor, say aye. Very strongly. Propose same sign or no, I guess. We're not trying to be clear when we say to the opposing. So now we have a public hearing. This is a public hearing on nine eighteen Grand Boulevard West, nine thirty Grand Boulevard West and nine thirty-six Grand Boulevard West related to a nuisance order. I think we have some did you have a order of presentation if you guys wanted to?
I can go first as.
Sure, okay.
Yep.
Um, yeah, we will hear from uh Mr. Bennett's attorney, if you'd like to share anything further with us.
I don't have any public comments. Anybody wanted to?
Sure. Any anybody, any member of the public can make a comment on the the nuisance order. We'll also call for public comment online. Because I didn't, I didn't notice. Yeah, it's six eighteen and we'll open the public hearing now. All right, then Karen, you go.
Yep.
Okay.
You want me to go? Sure. Okay. All right. Yes, it is entered. Okay. Um, I'm just gonna share my screen here with our Zoom audience. Okay. You want the microphone on or off? Okay, all right. I've been warned I hurt everyone's ears when I. Oh, okay. So just kind of wanted to go over how we got here. Um, we've been over it a few times, so I won't um belabor the issue too much. Um, but we received a number of complaints from the public about the large storage of materials at the offices that we described. Um, we had a staff meeting with our city attorney, our police, planning and zoning, um and determined that we needed to issue a public nuisance. Uh, I've included some Google, Google images here since twenty twelve. This is in twenty twelve. Um, and just progression, this is twenty or twenty eighteen uh satellite image and up to present day, um twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Uh, so just kind of showing the progression again of materials that have been um stored at that property and that in fact, in twenty twelve and twenty ten, there were a lot less um things stored there. Here's another uh satellite image uh progression. Um, just that that may, you know, it was really in the past year or two that we started receiving more complaints, but had received those over time. So we determined that there are code violations in a couple of areas. One is junk and rubbish. Um, here's the definition up up there. Um. Any material or substance stored in the open or not imposed in a building, which does not serve nor is intended to serve any useful purpose. Um, Mr. Viner and his attorney at the last meeting said because his equipment and other items are for sale and are not dismantled pieces of equipment, they're not junk. Um, I just wanted to draw your attention that when we define junkyard in the code, um, it does indicate that any lot, area lot, parcel, building, structure, thereof, used for storage, collection, processing, purchase, sale or abandonment, et cetera, includes materials and machinery, that's defined as a junkyard. So it could be for sale and still be considered junk. Um. And then and staff knew these items were junk due to the following reasons. They nicely provided that there are eighty-eight items stored on the property. Those values have significantly depreciated from their original value. I would argue again, kind of slightly higher than scrap materials. So a lot of the items listed down there are listed for being for sale for anywhere between a hundred and a hundred fifty dollars. Um, and then when I just, you know, Googling, um, you know, they they would really value even use for more like fifteen hundred to five thousand. Um, I saw many items that need to be repaired. Um, and again, they're just um being stored on the property for long periods of time, which is why we concluded they're not being used for their original purpose. So again, in our view, just because an item is for sale, it doesn't mean that it's it has a purpose. It's um, the other thing that I would note is that Google imagery from twenty twelve demonstrates that the red plow truck has not moved from its current park location in thirteen years. Um, when I asked about the vehicles, um, and if they're operable, um, they all need to have a battery placed in them to be operable or others have a flat tire. So our definition of junk vehicles is that any unlicensed, unregistered, inoperable vehicle. Um, our interpretation that it needs to be driven off the lot to be considered operable, not that you would have to add a battery to drive it. Staff looked on Craigslist and Facebook Marketplace and as of today, cannot find any of these lawnmowers or equipment listed for sale on Craigslist or Facebook. Uh, Mr. Viner does have twenty-two items for sale on Facebook Marketplace, but we could not find any of the eighty-eight items listed on um for sale. We have heard from staff and residents that they have purchased items from Mr. Viner. Uh, but we just know there's no website, no signage and the mix of materials from barrel barrels to pallets to a canoe leads us to conclude again, this is collecting and storing of assortment of used parts. Um, and items not used for their purpose, in other words, junk. Um. And then just finally, if you maybe go with that definition and say none of it's junk because it's all for sale, we do have another uh section in the code which just says by failure to act, um, is maintaining a public nuisance which unreasonably annoys, injures, or endangers the safety, health, morals, comfort, and reports of any member of members of the public, which is why again, we looked into this again, due to the number of complaints of the property over the past year. Um, and amassing of equipment, um, created conditions that have created this um nuisance. Um. And again, um, received complaints about some safety concerns. Again, best best practices that kind of piles of materials uh could attract mice or rodents. We haven't gotten specific complaints, but again, that's another reason we're not wanting to see large amount of items uh stored outdoors, junk items. Um. And just again, to just emphasize, you can be a property in Wabash Zone commercially, but you can't also have a public nuisance. I want to note the progress that Mr. Viner has made on the property. He has removed items from the property. Staff have noted this. He has put a number of items in the alley not visible to passersby. He has licensed and tabbed the cars. He has sold some items. He has built a fence and began moving equipment behind the fence. And the barrels are now away from public view and stored in the alley. Joe Stark and I met with Mr. Viner, um, I believe, last Friday. Um, and so we've um kind of come up with a again, at the staff's opinion, this does de- define a public nuisance. But now we're on to kind of helping we move forward. So we did thankfully um did receive a proposal from Mr. Viner today, a couple of hours ago, which we did request. Um, they are requesting that the item be tabled until June third. Um. And that Mr. Viner will um build a fence as outlined above here um to address the city's con- concerns and and would commit to uh storing all those items within that fenced-in area in addition to the one that's already been built. Um, I had also before talking, just included a compromise was just that and I'll just read it aloud. I don't have it in the PowerPoint, but just the remedy I have proposed and have ready to go onto the resolution was that we all the eighty-eight items um are stored indoors, stored inside a permanent fence or landscape screened. Um. That the city would accept fifteen pieces of machinery or less lined up being advertised for sale that are operable and good of working order with no visible signs of rust or missing parts. Um. Any other materials not provided in the inventory should be removed from the. Any other materials not provided in the inventory should be removed from the property or alley, or again, screened behind the fence. Um, allow some building materials neatly stacked. Um, and that all, all vehicles on the prop, uh, property should be able to be driven, um, and operable. Um, and then I just said we would accept unlimited amount of trailers on the property. Uh, and then we had another option of just impose full compliance with ordinance, which is. Basically everything is again, behind a fence or stored indoors with not allowing any, any materials to remain outside. Um. And Mr. Kneisel can explain better why they're requesting the tabling of the item, or, or Mike can jump in with this. Um. But it is their feeling that, um. If we declare it a nuisance today, according to our code, they would only have ten days to appeal it. Or they don't have another chance to appeal. To address that issue, I've added to the resolution that we would allow, we would still declare it a nuisance, but allow an appeal up to. The date that we decided that it had to be complete and, and make sure that we're explicit about that. But I believe they are still more comfortable with just tabling the item and that's a proposal they give us versus having us declare a nuisance. So would you mind speaking next and then Mike can make any final comments?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, first off, I want to. Thank you administrator for pointing out some progress, uh, want to. Maybe expand upon that a little bit, um, certainly Mr. Binner. Estimating your group of property from the, or property from the properties today. Uh, some of that's been by sale, others been through, uh, assignment. Uh, or on the knees, uh, so I, I would suggest a great deal of, uh, this stuff has left the property since the, uh, beginning of this process. As the administrator pointed out, he also built a fence, uh, that fence is significant. It creates a large space that will be screened. Uh, at present, there's some material inside the fence, uh, but there's a little bit of a holdup on that and that was explained to the administrator. Uh, at some point in the past, Mr. Binner had some. Uh, asphalt tailings, uh, put down in that area, uh, the idea was that. Those tailings, because of their nature, after being compressed over time, form a fairly solid base. Uh, for whatever reason, these tailings do that, uh, so they're kind of still loose gravel, which is, uh, unsatisfactory to, uh, Mr. Bennett, so he's. Been working with the, uh, sand gravel people that brought him those tailings, uh, and. It's been decided that they're going to replace that with tailings that will provide a more solid base, which was the intent from the start. So that's going to happen within the next two or three weeks. Uh, so at this point, Mr. Binner has not moved everything by a fence that he can. Because he doesn't want to move it all in there and then just simply move it all back out again. So that they can come in, dig up the old substrate and, and put in the new stuff. Uh, so that fence will alleviate more of the problem than the present is. Um. In addition, uh, as that's been pointed out. Uh, Mr. Binner has titled all vehicles, including the red downtroops, that are licensed and tabbed, telling all the type of vehicles, including the red downtroops. Uh, so that they're all up to date with regard to license. Most of them are immediately operable. I think it's a mischaracterization to say they all need to have batteries put in, that's just simply not the case, there are vehicles there that could be driven off that property as we stand in today. Uh, the others will take some minor. Uh, work as far as putting a battery in or pumping up the tire, uh, those things can be accomplished and will be, uh, at some point. Uh, in addition, as was suggested to Mr. Binner at the outset. The material that remains outside has been organized, uh. Looking at some of the pictures that were shown here of machinery that had, had, had at least three of their own property. I would suggest it's very different now, they're, they're in lines, they're orderly, uh, even the materials in the alley have been organized, uh, and, and local, uh. You know, I, I think it's. It's a little bit of a stretch to suggest that the present situation attracts vermin or rodents, uh. I saw no evidence of that whatsoever, and I don't think that's, uh, anything that he has going on there is going to attract vermin or rodents. Uh, so it suggests it's a problem, I, I just don't think it's legitimate. Uh, so. The point of all that. Is that Mr. Binner is attempting to comply. He's doing his level best to try and address these concerns that are raised by the. Neighbors or other interested members of the community who for whatever reason have taken issue with, uh, this property. It's interesting that the administrator points out that. The property has kind of slowly progressed, uh. But within the last two or three years, there's been a noted increase in the amount of material. Yet the complaint only started coming in about a year ago, probably about the same time that. Mr. Binner put out some quibble in science, uh, that perhaps some of the members of the community don't care for. Uh, it doesn't seem like that's just a coincidence, especially when you know the people that were here speaking. So there's proximity to the property that's generally interested in it. In any event, my point is he's trying to comply, he's trying to work with you all. Uh, to come up with a solution here. Uh, that's going to be effective, uh, everybody's going to be happy to hear it, uh, and it's going to be as economically reasonable as possible. So as has been noted by the administrator. Uh, Mr. Binner is not intending to stop those clean up efforts. In fact, as has been noted, uh, he has agreed to commit to, uh, continue those clean up efforts. As part of that, he's agreed to put up a fence, a fence that will cost him a bunch of money. Uh, so he's going to spend a lot of money to create this fence. And allow lining the entire back end of the property and then coming down and pouring a lot and creating another area there. If you look carefully at those pictures, uh, that Mr. Gregory's been providing. And you compare the amount of space inside the fence to the amount of space outside of the fence that's currently occupied. Uh, by items that apparently some people have issue with. You can see that with the combination of the two enclosures, there's going to be ample space to store everything. Um, that, that's going to happen, he's going to do that. But he needs a little bit of time. Uh, as is pointed out, I think Mr. Gregory's in a reporting community. Point out, if he. That month, that encompasses at this point, three problems. So he, he has some work that he has to do as far as combining those two properties legally. So that he can build a one fence going around the two properties. That's going to take some time. He's very fortunate that the weather, uh, has been very frothy for the past couple of weeks. It's, it's not right now, uh, and it likely isn't going to be for a while, so weather is another issue. As far as putting in this fence and getting some of these items behind the fence. Uh, so things take time, uh, he, he wants to comply, he's working to comply. Uh, but it's going to take some time to get that over. In addition, as noted before, with regard to all title property. Uh, he'll commit to having that top tab, uh, and operable, uh, within a reasonable amount of time. So that brings us to the point that the administrator was making about our request. To table the resolution for now versus, um. Versus voting to enact the resolution tonight. So. I understand that everybody interprets things differently. And I understand that it's been represented, at least in the experience, uh, and graphic the rest of you. That our concern in this regard is perhaps common. I don't think it is, and I could pass this out, this is the, is the copy of. Just a one-page copy. The operative ordinance here that we're talking. I thought I had explained to this, or our position, I was pretty well last time, but it seems to go, go there continues to suck confusion. So section ninety-one twenty of your code. Covers enforcement of this public nuisance ordinance. And if you read that right down the line, you don't have to be a lawyer to interpret what this says, it's all very clear. In the beginning, section A one. The city shall determine if the conditions exist which may, may violate this subchapter. Well. That, that has been accomplished, uh, apparently by, uh, either the administrator, the council or both. Perhaps, uh, the law enforcement as well, so a, a, a condition was identified. Uh, that you believe violates the subject. So what comes next, when we move down the list, number two. Upon identification of that violation. Notification by certified or registered letter, letter of personal service shall be issued to the owner of the property. So when we were here the last time, we talked about how that process worked. And some of the deficiencies that existed there, as far as only noticing one property versus all three. That's now been rectified, you all have sent additional notices covering all the properties, so happily we're fully done with this here now and things are going the way that it's hoped. The notice is to identify the nature of the nuisance, the violation, the subchapter, in order that the nuisance be avated within ten days of receiving this notice. So. More or less, the notice does those things. Uh, and so that's also been accomplished. Once that's been sent, then upon receiving the notification, says the property owner shall proceed to alleviate the nuisance. Obviously, that hasn't happened to your satisfaction yet, but I would suggest that Mr. Binner is doing his best to cooperate with that to that degree. So let me get to the next subsection. It says the property owner shall have the right to, to a hearing for the city council. And that's what we're here for today, this is. I think probably take three of this hearing, uh, but we're here, uh, at this continued hearing. Uh, and now it encompasses all three properties, which in the beginning did not. But at any rate, we're now having a hearing as the ordinance suggests we need to do it. So, and yeah, so section C, C one covers that hearing, what has, has to happen with that hearing. So first, first section says we ought to have the hearing, which is what we're doing. But then this is where things become interesting. Number two says, following the hearing, the city council shall, by resolutions, determine whether a violation is evident. So it's at that point, when you look at your resolution. That you're being asked to determine that there is in fact. Uh, a violation. And to our way of thinking, that is an important. Part of this proceeding, this is an important point. Because if you look at the next, uh, provision. It says there that upon finding a violation, the city council shall order that the cited conditions be abated. So these shalls are important. And Mr. Flaherty can explain to you, uh, if it's not painfully obvious, that shall does not mean may. Shall does not mean may. Sh- shall does not mean you can, it means that you will. So at the point that this hearing is closed. At that point, the city council shall, by resolution, determine whether a violation is evident. So what happens once you do that? That then triggers D. D states, if an appeal to the city council's order is not made within ten days following the city council's decision. And the property is not running in compliance as ordered. The city will initiate action to eliminate the violation. So here we are, in Mr. Binner's decision. If you issue an order today, finding that that, that there is a violation, and you close the hearing, uh, and you issue. Whatever visit you choose to do, uh, with regard to what needs to be done from here. The appeal needs to be made within ten days, or Mr. Binner risks you all just simply coming in and taking his stuff. Now going to. He's going to appeal. So we can argue about what this all means and how to interpret it. But channels and wills are not negotiable, they, they are, you will do that. Uh, and in order to protect Mr. Binner. If you decide today that a violation occurs, you close the hearing, and you make that finding, we will appeal. We'll appeal next week, because we're going to have to do that in ten days to protect him from any further action. It's all very well outlined here in what needs to be done in these certain areas.
Don't threaten.
So.
Oh.
I was there.
I don't know. No, no one said anything, it was.
Somebody said something.
I, yes, I'm, I accidentally, I think, I think.
Well, I think it was Max, and it's not like.
We'll hear from him if they'd like to speak anymore.
They had an opportunity to speak and they didn't.
Oh, well, I assume you didn't want me interrupted, we can let them interrupt you now if you'd like.
They had an opportunity when I raised it earlier, somebody had a public. A public comment that they wanted to make, we.
We would welcome it now, anybody online want to make a public comment?
Why, why aren't they making a public comment in the middle of my time, I mean, I would.
Mayor, Mayor, I think you should just let Mr. Kneisel finish, then you can ask anybody from the public after he's done to make a comment.
He's implied that he wanted to hear it, so we'll hear it in a moment.
So. In any event. Mr. Flaherty can tell you how we interpret it, anybody else can tell you how they interpret it, I'm telling you how we interpret it. And we're going to end up allowing an appeal if this resolution is passed today, as it's outlined. What I'm suggesting is. It, it seems like you want to give Mr. Binner some time. And again. He has in good faith been working and trying to get this property into a condition that everybody's happy. So in order to best do that. Why not recognize the process, the progress that he's made? And set this aside and let him continue to make the progress along the lines of what he's committed to. He's committed to making that fence, getting properties combined, putting the fence out, getting the items behind it. If we get to a certain point, a reasonable point. And that's done, and this equipment is behind this fence, then maybe this doesn't need to go anywhere. Uh, but if, if we're being forced to align it right now. It is going to go further and it's going to end up costing everybody. Uh, and in the end, uh, who knows what happens? Uh, again, I would suggest that he's earned some concessions here. Uh, he's done a lot, that fence they put up, it's a good looking fence, that alleviates a huge part of the problem. If he puts up another fence that's about three times the size of the one that he put up, that eliminates a greater burden. You're not giving him the opportunity to do that. See if it gets accomplished, and in the end, you still have the opportunity to come forward and do all this stuff. I've suggested the June meeting, uh. The administrator putting it June third, that must be the date of the June meeting, uh, and, and that's fine, so that gives. A little bit of time where there's some guaranteed warm weather, uh, you can get this stuff taken care of. If you come back on June third, then no progress, you're not happy with the progress. You can untable this, move forward with the resolution, and we can go that direction. But. What if, in the alternative, we come back on June third, the fence is up. All the equipment that's outside the fence is reasonable looking, uh, operational and not a nuisance. Uh, then the whole problem was win, and you don't have any issues that you have to deal with here. That seems a lot cheaper. And it seems like you're really not risking a lot by waiting a few months here to run and do these things, you can always come back and do it. Uh, so that's our request today, I think it's reasonable, uh, having answered the questions that anybody has been. Uh, but, um, we're hoping that you give it a very chance to continue the progress that you've been making here, so then. Everybody can reach a compromise in this manner, uh, and you can move on to the solution.
Thank you, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Kneisel? Hearing no questions? Do we have any public comments? If we welcome it from City Hall, but we'd also welcome it from anyone online. Mike, did you have anything prepared you wanted to share with council?
Um. Mayor, you broke up a little bit, were you addressing me?
Just, I'm not hearing any public comment this time, I wonder if you had any comment you wanted to share with council?
I don't have much, I'll just. Point out the ordinance language on the, the, um. Process, uh, enforcement procedures. You know, your code is a little bit skimpy on details there compared to other codes and, um. You know, I would just point out a few things. You know. The shall order that the, the cited, cited conditions be abated is very, um, simple. It doesn't, your ordinance is silent upon, on issues of, upon what time period within which. Cited conditions are to be abated. So I don't think, I don't think this can be read to say that. You know, upon a finding of a violation that the city. Shall order that the cited conditions be abated immediately. I think the implication is there's that word immediately i- is in your ordinance and it isn't, in fact. What I would tell you is I, I very rarely see. Nuisance conditions like this, especially like this, but really any nuisance conditions that aren't given some period of time to be. Abated, you know, the property owner isn't given some period of time to abate them. And then on the appellate issue, I mean, the way I read that provision. I understand Mr. Kneisel's way of reading it, and basically what he's saying is. You know, to ensure that he doesn't blow some sort of statute of limitations or deadline. He was going to have to appeal because he's not going to take the risk that this ordinance is interpreted a different way. Um. And then paraphrasing what he's saying, but I think that's basically it. Um, the way I read this and I read the case law regarding nuisance enforcement is the city has wide latitude to enforce their nuisance provisions. is the city has wide latitude to enforce their nuisance provisions in their code. Um, they don't, you know, you can give, I think you, as long as you follow the spirit of the code, I think the case law allows that. And, and the way I view this is, um, if an appeal to the city council is not made within ten days, the city can't abate the nuisance, but it doesn't mean the city has to abate the nuisance within ten day, you know, if no appeal is filed within ten days. It doesn't state specifically that an appeal must be made within ten days. It just links the city's ability to do something to a minimum of ten days. And somebody's writing a comment, um. So, but I understand there, there's some hinky language in here where it says, following the city council's decision. So it says, uh, if an appeal to the city council's order is not made within ten days following the council's decision, um, and the property is not brought into compliance as ordered, the city will initiate an action to terminate the violation. Again, it doesn't say upon what process and within what time, um, the city will do that. So the city can follow the shalls and the wills while still giving extra due process, more than what the ordinance provides to Mr. Binner. Um, that's my overall view of it. Um, now, Mr. Kneisel doesn't have that view, and, and, and they have the right to appeal it, and they're telling you're gonna, you know, you, they're gonna appeal. I would also say that the main, um, issue is not how much money it's gonna cost the city during appeal. The main issue is, is this a nuisance or not, number one? And then number two, if you decide, number one is yes, what's the method? That needs to, you know, what, what abatement procedures are required? And then number three, within which time, within what time those, those procedures must be completed? So that's, that's my take on it. I mean, ultimately, this is gonna dovetail into Christie's presentation on updating the ordinance. And I think if you compare this to the league model ordinance and, and policy, you know, the procedures for ordinance enforcement, and to other cities who have more closely followed the league, league of cities, uh, model, you know, there's, it's a little bit clearer what's supposed to happen, so. But, you know, uh, this is the ordinance we have, so, um, that's my, that's my view of it. Um, I think the council can, you know, I think Caroline can handle the rest of the directing the council. She's put a lot of work into this and, and understands, can kind of direct you on your options after the close of the public hearing. I would note that somebody wrote a comment in the, um, in the Zoom, and maybe I would just strike that, and, and if anybody wants to make a comment that's part of the public record, they should be acknowledged and make a verbal comment. It's just too hard to add into the, into the record in a Zoom comment, I think.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike?
So, so maybe, maybe ask for public comments one more time, just 'cause somebody wrote that comment, I would say.
Will do. Bringing online, if you'd love to make a public comment, please use sort of a part of the public record by verbally commenting. It was noted by staff that there was a, a message sent into the chat, but we won't publicly hear it as council. So we just welcome you to unmute yourself and share anything you'd like with council regarding the. Something to figure out.
Some audience?
Anybody in the audience? Oh, certainly, please, just go ahead and dress up in the podium so we can hear you. And nobody likes the podium. We don't like it anymore up there either.
Exactly. My name is Brad Wilson, and I guess I would just like to say, um, in behalf of all this, that if you're gonna do your ruling tonight, of all this, you have to ask yourself, what is your goal? What do you want to accomplish with this? Okay, Lance has admitted, or his goal is to clean this thing up. You just ask him for more time. I went through the same thing with Calm. They did not allow me the time to do this, um, which I have said right from the start is not correct. Um, once it was decided it had to be done, which I'm under the assumption you guys are at that point now. Uh, once I come to that point, I continue to clean that up almost daily to show progress. And I'm under the understanding that Lance was kind of doing that same thing. So I guess you need to look at what you can find, what you want to have with all this. If you both can reach an agreement by waiting that extra time, whatever it may be, it's gonna solve a lot of problems instead of jumping into enforcement and trying to take, um, lawful enforcement or whatever to do it. Now, I guess that's just my opinion. Uh, that was one thing that I was upset with, is I was doing the same thing he's doing, and they never get the time to do it, they come in, and now I had a big deal, which, again, is gonna be going through the court system. Um, it just doesn't work out for anybody if you can reach an agreement now or soon. It, um, it just, it's a lot better for everybody. Um, everybody feels better, and it's all over, done with, there's no hard feelings. If you can reach your agreement, and he can reach his agreement, it's a lot better. On a handshake or whatever you wanna call it, than going in, open heads, and saying, you're wrong, you're wrong, whatever it may be. Um, so I just wanted to say that, that I don't think that time period is out of line. Um, I wish I did, I do. So I just, that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Again, online, if you haven't done this before, just go ahead and make sure you're unmuted, and then share with council anything you'd like to keep us to hear. So only once you can say so down there. Okay. I'm not hearing any further public comment. I'll ask one more time. Otherwise, I'll close the public hearing at six fifty-three. All right? Okay, we have proposals before us. Anything, uh, we, we had some motion activity in our last meeting, I hope that even it's not further outlined. If any, if it feels common, they'd like to have a motion and then further discussion, or if you have any questions about material before us.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I don't know if we need to have a debate about whether or not this meets the definition of a nuisance. I think that was the focus of last month's conversation, but we did, the three, four of us did all focus on saying, let's put our differences aside on what's junk and what's not junk, and come with some ideas, is what I understood that everyone wanted to see happen, so. Um, and then, but yeah, one of the decisions is, it needs a definition, and then how do we wanna handle the remedy, and what remedy do we want people, so. And then there's this issue of, you know, going through with the resolution that I prepared, I had outlined that we would accept an appeal at a later date, or, um, table it was, is the other proposal that they provided. And again, I want to thank them for getting that ahead of time to the meeting that, that is helpful, that we were able to prepare with that, so.
Well, I'll speak first. I mean, everybody knows my feelings from last meeting. He's had now two hearings on this. I don't want to drag this out till June. I want, I like the option B. It gives a number of things that are highlighted in the resolution. And I would propose we get it done by April first, and if he needs more time after that, he most certainly can come back to council and ask. Uh, I don't think we necessarily need to instantly go in there and clean it out, but I'm sorry, he's been dealing with this since September. And now all of a sudden, we're finally cleaning it up, so why not give him a couple more months and, and go from there? That's my opinion, and that's what I would stick with.
So you're saying table it?
No, I would say pass the resolution with the date of April first, twenty twenty-five. With the, most of the conditions in option B, I like that. It's, it cleans up the property, he puts up the fence that he's done worth. He's, he's taken an effort to clean it up, which is good, but shifting some of the stuff to the alley is not appropriate, so, um, you know, cleaning the alley out a little bit better, um, I, it's what I would propose, so. That gives him time, you know, and if all of a sudden we have seventeen snowstorms in the next two months, we'll come back and say, hey, can we get another month or something? But I say, otherwise, we're gonna drag it out, and if it drags out to June, and then all of a sudden, what? He's gonna drag it out to August? I mean, I don't know. So this, this gives a little bit more time to get it cleaned up before summer starts, so that's my thoughts.
Just make one comment, that if they, if he puts up the fencing as proposed, it still allows for storage in the alley, it just screens off the alley. If you were driving on the alley, there'd be elements, so, um, that is included in all of the, the options. Screening in any time it occurs is, is allowed in all of the options.
Yeah, I'm okay going to June, but what I don't want to have happen is come June, we're sitting back here debating the same thing again. So if I've got someone who says, that's our drop dead day, and Lance agrees to not appeal, you know, that that's it, then I'm good with that. But, um, I think, I think we have a responsibility to our constituents, our community, in order to, that we need some kind of, yeah, we gave him a deadline, we gave him a date, and he's agreed to that date. Um, I think that's probably where I'm at with this. And I'm okay with it. I mean, to be honest, I mean, he's been, we've been at this five months now. It gives him another essentially three months, four, three and a half months, of which two are winter. So I mean, it's hard to deal with, did post falls in the winter, then all, those sorts of things. Then I, I toured the site, um, he's made a great deal of progress. I see his plan. It's just a matter of him getting it done, so that's kind of where I'm with it.
What does agreeing to not appeal look like to you, John? Um, because with the way the resolution is written, it says he'd have to file the appeal by June first. What they're saying is, if you tabled it, that, and there was no progress, they'd still have an opportunity to appeal. We declared it the nuisance in June.
I want that waived.
Okay, so you want then, we'd say, we give you to June first, but you wouldn't allow an appeal? Okay.
Brad has brought it up in the motion last time.
Yeah, I, I made a motion. Just to recap, I made a motion to go with what Lance was suggesting and just table it until June. Um, nobody seconded it, so, um, I'm still there. I, I feel like if we make this resolution, they're gonna appeal. Uh, I'm, I'm just, I'm confident of it, so. I feel like if we declare this tonight, it's getting appealed, we'll be in court. Um, that's just what my intuition says. I don't want that to happen, so. Um, I, I won't make a motion again because I didn't even get a second last time, so. Um, but I, I can't vote to, to declare this resolution because I just feel like a lot of things that, that Mr. Goose has touched on, you know? So that's where I'm at.
So Lance, would you, would you be able to, would you agree to that? Um, brought it out to June, but that's your drop dead date? Anyway. Yeah? Yeah. I'm sorry.
No, please, that's, I, and I have a question about the feasibility, that I don't know what's involved in your, in your fence construction at that time on that site, so.
I, I can't, I can't advise Lance to do that. I can't identify the way it's right to due process, but I guess what I could suggest to him is if it's paid, you already got, the public hearing is, is about exhausted here. You come back, you.
Wait.
You make your determination that, and then he decides if he'll appeal or not. But in the meantime, he's gonna continue to make progress. Um, you know, I understand why he lost drop dead date, I guess, kind of that point on again, is that he's earned some additional.
I think we've given him that. I don't, I don't discount, or given him until June.
Yeah.
And I mean, Lance, you would agree, you've made progress, you intend to continue to make progress.
Yeah.
You, you fully intend to have this done by start of summer. So if you agree to saying, all right, I, I agree to that, um, and agree to that, because I mean, the thing, what would happen is, we'll, we'll sit here until June. If it doesn't get done, you know, then it's gonna go through the same process, you're gonna appeal, it's gonna go to court. We got all summer, it's gonna be that way. You know, so that's, and, and that's not, that then drags it, but then we're a year into this, and that's not a good thing for anybody.
As I pointed out last, first of all, you got, you know, actually speaking of awards, he's been working hard. You know, he's got a lot done.
I was there.
Oh, my dear, why you say that twice? And I'll table it. If you table it, that doesn't mean he can't bring it back next month if he hasn't done anything. Or the month after that, you don't have to wait until June. You table it till June now, otherwise somebody could come back in and say, Lance said he's gonna put up this fence here if not anything, we should maybe bring it back and talk about it again. There's no reason we can't do that. Uh, but to us, June is a realistic date because it provides some months where there's guaranteed warm weather where you can get the construction done. Um, so I think there's a little drama, but he's just gonna find it.
I think we're looking for it. We, uh, you know, I think if I can assume the goal, council and staff, it's that we want to see our code enforced, and we want it to be in a reasonable timeframe, and we don't want there to be outliers, because that doesn't set of example for our community. And we have plenty of individuals that are stated that take care of their nuisance, and they don't, we don't end up here. Most, most of that is, doesn't, doesn't end up in this, to this level of process, so. You know, we've had September, October, November, December have not been unseasonable. I don't wanna hear about the weather anymore, because every kid I know is complaining about there being no snow, so. It's, it's to some degree that's a new point. There's been time, not only is there possibly still time, there's been time, so. In terms of looking for that, that spot that makes sense, you know, there have been a number of months in which we've been, we've been giving this grace and certainly being clear in the intent of our enforcement code, and that's what the best of the notice is for, so. We have quite seen, certainly we've seen manual labor, and that's important, but I know that we've seen the, 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 that it's connecting, that what, we're, that we're all out of the same thing, it's just if this gets resolved. So I think it's a good question of what, what the goal is, and one that, and we can answer it for ourselves if I'm off the beat.
I think I'd be okay passing the resolution with the point that, um, my sense, Mike pointed out, that when there is a violation, we didn't specify any time period where it has to be enforced. So if we said, you know, if we're saying we're not gonna enforce this till June first, it seems like we're taking care of both things. The legal thing, saying, yes, it is a nuisance, and we're also saying we're not gonna enforce it until June, whatever, third. And that gives him the specific time in front, so he knows that it has to be done by then, and it's, you know, documented.
But that leaves him open for appeal.
Well, he can still appeal then, but I mean, just.
No, he'll appeal.
Well, he can appeal now, but I mean, it's at the point. We gave, we told him he's good till, there'd be no action taken by the city until June.
But still, we, we declared it a nuisance, so.
And on that declaration, it still gives him that due process to appeal. Right, he still can appeal, but I mean, he also, the city isn't gonna be doing anything till June, so why would he bother appealing if he, he says he can get it done by June? Unless he just wants to prolong this.
But the, the thing is, if we draw that line, that if we say, okay, it's June, that it would be prudent on him to appeal it within the ten days now, because then that protects him in case he doesn't get it to June. Right? Right, Mike?
I think that's what Mr. Kneisel's saying. He's saying that he has no choice but to appeal because our ordinance has that ten-day language in it. So he can't wait to appeal till May fifteenth or, or whatever. I mean, it's kind of counterintuitive. I mean, that the property owner is now saying he's gonna do all this expensive work to clean up the property, which to me is an acknowledgement that the property is in fact a nuisance. And then they want to appeal the fact that it's a nuisance. So I don't, I don't really, I don't know. I mean, I think you can do what you want. I think you can table it, you can do either the, of, of the choices, you know, um, you know, I don't know what, what would come from an appeal when they're already agreeing to clean it up. Usually people appeal because they don't wanna clean it up. So, but, but I, I mean, I think that's, that's how I see it, but I understand, Mr. Kneisel, I understand the language in your code is unique, I guess, on that point. So I, I can see where he's coming from on it, I guess. I guess the other thing I would say is, sometimes what cities have done, I didn't mention this to Caroline, but when they do give people more time, they, they have them do like progress reports every month. So like the property owner, I've seen that before, where the property owners take photos and do a written statement of what they cleaned up that month, and give it to the city administrator every month, so that you have an idea of, you know, you can track the progress, I guess. Um, so there's other things like that you could consider, I guess, as well, and, and I'm not suggesting you do that in this case necessarily, but I guess that's an option.
Just back to my question. So we're not, I think that's an important thing to note, is Mr. Flaherty saying, it seems counterintuitive that they're cleaning up, but saying that they're, you know, the determination. That is our, we don't think it's a nuisance, and that's what we were arguing with people. But Mr. Binner's trying to do neighborly thinking, he's trying to bring his property into a condition where everybody enjoys it, it's okay. And that's what I've been trying to say, he's trying. And that's what I've been trying to say, he's trying to work it involved, make this happen. We certainly don't conceive that this is nuisance space, we don't believe that it is, but despite that, it's going to try and, so that's what we just.
I don't know, we have two consistent heads on us, but we'll see if anybody ends it, Tim was clearing here.
And it is nice to see that he's updated, I've been taking some effort. I just don't want this to drag out. I guess to June, all of a sudden now he feels or something goes differently. And now we're into July, and then all of a sudden we're in August, now it's been a year, so at least this is. Shows us that, hey, we declared it a nuisance, which goes with our ordinances. It's two, and then we give him a time to to clean it up. I mean, he's already had five months, four months. Give him another three or four months, whatever. I just don't like to go off till June. I would much rather see it in April. I truly, I would like to see it in March, but. I'm at least willing to, hey, all right, yeah, February, March could be a little rough for weather wise, let's give him a delay, but that's my thoughts. I don't want to table it, but that's, that sounds like it's what people want.
But if we declared it a nuisance, how far is that gonna draw it out in the legal process?
Well, that's not, I guess it's not our point. I mean, I, we shouldn't be making a decision of. Well, we potentially might go to court on this and it might drag out even further. I think according to our ordinances, we declared it a nuisance, and that's what it is. And then we figure out, all right, once we declare it, what are we gonna do for time? Normally, what would we do? Fifteen days, thirty days would be done? And now also we're given a five months, and then if we wanna go until June, it's another three months, so. I I just think all of a sudden now we got a precedent that we can give you eight months to clean up your property. I don't think that's what we wanna give you, but. That's the way I perceive it as. I mean, I'm just thinking if somebody had five cars on their property, we declared it a nuisance, we wouldn't give them eight months to move the cars. So why all of a sudden are we just all of a sudden say, hey, you can have a year or six months or seven months? But that's me. And it's great to see progress, but. I guess if you wanna table it, we better be able to get progress reports monthly. Or somehow know that he's moving towards that end date that we want.
So one other issue that I think you might wanna question either Christie or Caroline on is. Um, so I think there's an ordinance that would, that you can't build a fence. He would have to combine the properties to comply with our ordinance in order to build the fence. Christie's shaking your head, so what's the process for doing that?
Yeah, you'd have to do a land conveyance, um, it's just a a form with the county, so it's a pretty simple and quick form, but. He has to provide his properties to be able to have side yard and rather than front yard fence, which you can't have, so. Just take some time to get processed and he has to pay his taxes um, to be able to combine the two properties, two properties.
Well, I'm okay with the June date, it's just a matter of, you know, do we. Um, adopt a resolution with the June date and accept that Lance is gonna need to appeal that.
Yeah, I did include, but I don't think it's satisfactory, number four, if that shall, that if the owner shall fail to remedy. Remedy the nuisance condition on or before the time specified above here and. So that's whatever date we decide, or the owner has not filed an appeal, then city and city attorney, we start moving forward. Eliminating it uh, ourselves. So I did try to include language. That we won't go in and start removing property from his property if he has filed an appeal before. The date we all land on, if that makes sense. So I tried to pro- provide assurances in the resolution. That we're committing. That that rights out, we can't go in and remove property if he's filed an appeal, if that makes sense, but. I think they're rigid reading our code, but I figured, you know, we are the council, we can. Try to make a statement to provide assurances that, yes, we do believe that if fast forward. That he's not waiving his rights to appeal, like we all understand, he now has until June, or let's say June. Second to appeal then at that point, and we extend that out, so. Does that give you any comfort at all, or um? Okay, all right, well, we tried, so.
I'm recalling what Mike said, just he didn't say that you don't, you know, I don't think he said that you you don't usually see somebody appeal because they don't think it's a nuisance. They don't wanna do it, and so that that is what I'm concerned about is that. That whether, we we don't agree, I don't think this body agrees with Mr. Benner on whether it's a nuisance or not, I think that's clear. It's been stated. We 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 probably have could have consensus that it is, and we want to see it addressed, and we're trying to get there, we really are. And and I think the comments about time, it's not lost on anybody, but it's not gonna suddenly. Here, I don't think until it's fully rectified to this group that, to these terms, that it's not a nuisance. So with the, now I've lost the the final item that you maybe would add. Was there a suggested item provision that would be added?
It it's in there already.
The one you just did, the date, the one you explained, I thought there was one right before, and I.
Wait, which one?
Not just yours. So I just think you should outline that again and see how that feels.
The appeal language, or?
Yeah, the uh, your.
Okay.
Your proposal with that timeline.
So conclusions in order, so then we're, I guess, on the title is. Okay, so what we presented today again is where there's a bunch of whereas statements declaring that we find. Findings of fact that it is um, a nuisance and kind of. Provides all the background of the different letters that were provided, et cetera, and testimony that was given. End quotes, all the sections in code that we find it a nu- nuisance. Um, and then under the conclusions in order. Um, just again, saying it is a public nuisance, they're hereby ordered to abate the nuisance conditions from the property. Um, as by completing the steps outlined in below, and I said council shall select one of the free options. Um, and so it sounds like there's somewhat, everyone's okay with option B, which is inclusive of the. Fence being um, built, because if they built the fence, then you can store items on the alley, et cetera. And then um, and that the property owner shall have until twelve P M on June. Second or June third, and then if they fail to remedy the nuisance conditions on or before June third. Or the owner has not filed an appeal, the city staff and city attorney. Are directed to take all actions necessary to re- remedy, abate, eliminate the blatant nuisance ourselves. And then it offers a bunch of options and. Mike, were you gonna provide some other assurance too with this, that we would be willing to amend this? To say that we would do a injunction or something like that?
Well, yeah, so I mean, typically, I'm not, I I think it's difficult in this case to do that, but. Ti- typically, the city would seek a court order to enter onto somebody's property to abate a nuisance like this. Um, the question is what form the court order takes, and that is really dependent on what the level of the nuisance is. And so, and that's difficult in this case because he's continually changing the state of the property, it's kind of evolving, and so it's hard for me to say, but. You know, I think it's a moot point, honestly, if they're definitely gonna appeal and try and fi- file some sort of legal action, it's just gonna end up in court. I don't, I don't, I think it's moot, honestly. I think we can just leave it as is.
Okay, so then the findings and conclusions allow us a variety of options in terms of a court order. And and following legal means then to go on his property and remove items, but again, I think. The sort of compromise and hope is that by June third, um, we'll have a fence put up. You know, and and everything will be licensed tab and drivable, I can put the key in now and drive off the property and. Um, but I do allow for kind of some items to remain out outdoors, cause that seemed reasonable, everyone has a boat trailer in their yard, so. Um, and we were noted in our conversation, some of this was arbitrary, me just trying to come up with a compromise there, so. But again, I think the fence solves, solves a lot of it, so. Um, so that, that's what is, was written up. Um, but yes, I was unable to, I, you know, the the other option is the the tableing of it. Versus declaring it today, so.
Why would we not propose a nuisance when our ordinance describes it as such? That's just the, that's the. You know, we don't, we don't want for this, we took a problem position for you, but if your perspective is it's not a nuisance and ours is that it is, and we're. You know, we're the, we're responsible for being responsive to our own code, we have, we have to take responsibility for that, for that goal. Um, we want the same thing, we want for you to find a spot for these. Ideas that are important to you, but at the current state, they 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 qualify as a nuisance in our code, so we have to respond to that. Um, and we want to be reasonable, and if there's anything we're missing, and we we can get there sooner, or we can, you know, we're, you know, I was. Curious about the timeline for the fence, and is that something you're gonna be building, or have you gotten somebody who says, yes, they can do it for you? That all factors into me in terms of the management of the project for you, and we would wanna know that if you thought that wasn't gonna be. Realistic, but we think it sounds realistic, that there's several months, several of them warm weather. Um, anticipated construction time for anybody.
I guess, you know, I I understand you're, you're the body that decides how to determine. The ordinance, and you're saying you think it's hard as well, we'd be a lot for it. But you're also steward of public assets here as well. If you know that this is gonna likely end up in court, you're gonna end up spending much more money. When this gentleman has shown over the course of the last several months that he's willing to try and rectify this without having to do all that. Why not take that option that only extends things a few months? Given the opportunity to do that, save the taxpayers.
My sense is, the answer to your question is, my sense is that we haven't been on the same plane in our, in this group's understanding of it, and Mr. Ben's understanding, so. I can, I'm concerned that there might be a challenge getting to the, to any goal in terms of what the community expects we do with regard to enforcing the ordinance. That's my, that's my, that's my. Background sense through all of these proceedings.
Well, I think you're in the same way in both degree of fence, and he's committed to do that. Evolving hours, that's gonna go a tremendously long way in identifying the situation. So you can argue about the characterization of the property, but I would agree that the fence solves the problem. Give him a couple months, he's gonna like fence, and I figure I'll do differently.
Brad's made that motion and passed, and what can they want to survive it?
Am I allowed to make the same motion?
Oh, yeah.
All right, well, um, I'll just remake my motion from last time that to table until June third.
With any conditions?
I mean.
We see monthly reports.
I I'm willing to add monthly reports, I think we can all go look at it.
Well, second.
The motion is second? Any further discussion about that?
I'm just afraid that, like Tim says, it'll just continue on and on and on. And we won't be enforcing our order, ordinance, so that's a bad precedent.
Do it that way, we still have this ordinance, we declared a nuisance, we're still gonna drag this out and leave the system. At least this gives him a chance. I'd like to see more progress, but I believe the progress reports would be key.
That would be good.
So if we table this until June three, can someone revisit it?
I believe that's what Mike said.
Well, I, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't table it. First of all, I don't think it's technically a motion to table, I think it's a motion to postpone. Under like Roberts rules, so you postpone it for a certain date, but I, I I guess I would. Just say, if you're going to do that, I would just. Um, postpone it, you know, until June third. But but allow the city administrator in her discretion to bring it back for a vote without any further public hearing. You know, each, you have one month, meeting a month, so each month between now and then, that would be March and April. And then to monitor the progress, and I don't think you can force Mr. Benner to give you progress reports, but I think. You could request that, and if he doesn't do that, you could just bring it back and move forward. So I guess the motion would be to motion to postpone until X date. And to reconsider, uh, reconsider the the motion at that time on on the resolution. Um, I think the other thing you could do is, nobody's brought this up, but you know, you could just postpone it. You know, each month and not hold another public hearing, not give anybody a chance to speak, but put this on the agenda in in March and April. And have Caroline make a short report to the council. And and then, you know, determine if enough progress has been made each month. Uh, to determine if you wanna continue to postpone it. Um, so there's, you you could form it however you want, but I think it's a. Motion to postpone, if that's what you're going to do, I think that would be. The correct way to do it, and and usually you postpone indefinitely or to a specific date. And I think June third must be your council meeting, is that correct, Caroline?
Yeah.
So, I mean, wh- what you could do is, um, you know, postpone it until May. You know. So May sixth, first Tuesday of the month, you could postpone it to May sixth, then just do a status update then. And see how much progress has been made. Um, and then you wouldn't have to wait all the way till June, and that would give him, you know. February and March and April, you know, two and a half months plus. And that way you wouldn't have to wait a full, all the way until June, you could just wait until May, if there's significant progress made, you could postpone it again until June. Something like that, so you could form it however you wanna form it, I guess, I'm just giving you ideas, if that's, if that's the direction the council's going.
So we had a motion a second to let that fail, and then.
Or you wanna amend?
It's drawn to.
I think what Mike thinks, so it's just geared to what you're saying, if you feel, if you feel like you wanna amend it, that was.
Sure, why don't, why don't we amend it to to postpone to the May sixth meeting? Give us an opportunity to look at what's been done, and we can always postpone. You know, the extra month if if things are kinda wrapping up, so.
With reports, monthly reports.
I was gonna provide those.
I think you would just, just request that you provide them, and and request that they be forwarded to the council, and if he doesn't provide them. You know, he, I don't know, like, most cities have, you know, you could probably readdress this sooner if he doesn't provide those, I suppose.
Sure.
All right. Could I make a suggestion on that?
Yes, please.
For Brad, you can say something like, there will be monthly meetings between Mr. Benner and the city administrator, and he could shoulder the progress.
I mean, that's reasonable, and also we would not wish to do that on a regular basis, so that is, that is part of this, is that expenditure of staff time that's gone into this is beyond. So I, I agree, that's one way to do it, I'd also just like him to be responsible, he says he wants to be, and provide that report. We, we all have access to properties, our communities nearby, all of us, we can drive by and see it. But I don't want it to be upon Caroline to organize a meeting, you know, reorganize the meeting when it doesn't work for him, be there on site, that's just, that's beyond, so. I would, I would mean respectfully, I don't, I don't need staff to be the.
No, I I agree with you on that. Let's hit snap a few pictures and. Send them to City Hall.
Sorry.
It just, I mean, it's even just snapping a few pictures. For your monthly update?
Y'all are driving by every day.
I just kinda like, I thought first place. Yeah.
It's not science there.
All right.
I, I, but I can.
Yeah. Well, I'll leave that up to you, so I'll just amend my motion to postpone until May sixth meeting. And we'll take it up at that point.
Do a second.
A second.
There were first and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
No.
Thank you. Thank you, all right, so you have this timeline clear in your mind? We don't wanna drive by every day, we just wanna know that it's really happening, that's what we want, that's what the community wants, is to know that the, the issue's being handled, and that. Properties are responsible when the public has concerns. That meet the definition of nuisance. Okay, anything further for Mike, if he can hopefully drop off, and are you gonna stay on for Christie's conversation with us, Mike?
I'm glad you brought it up. I, I gotta be honest, I've got the flu, I've had it for three days.
The time is very valuable, we would not ask you to stay on, if it was just a minor thing, please take care.
No, and I, I'll just tell you, I spoke with Christie about it, she put a lot of work into that, and I think. She can explain it better, better than I can anyway, so.
Good, thank you very much, Mike. Great, have a good night. And the same for you. We don't need you to stay the rest of the night unless you care to, we're gonna be talking further about our ordinance, and the, the more specificity that Christie researched. Um, anybody else has to go, um, thanks for being here, thanks for everybody making public comment. And, let's see, I think we will. We want that item, isn't it ready? Yes, so, oh, this is the not public code that's changing, our, our next. I think it's a public hearing on changes, city code, this is, um, commission language, so we have some. Clarity about dates, numbers, meetings, that kind of thing, people need to participate, and those ordinance edits are here for, for, for the read, did anybody have any questions about that?
No, the only question, are the ambulance commission on the meetings, what changed on that? Is that addition to the? I mean, what's changing, I guess is what my question.
So it was pointed out that, um, we were not meeting at least monthly, and it said, as it did in many commissions, that they must meet at least monthly. So we're just correcting it, so it's clear that commissions, their commissions aren't required to meet monthly, if there's no business.
So are we putting that statement in every commission's?
We're basically getting rid of it, where it says it, it says it for. Do you wanna speak on it, Wendy?
I mean, does, does planning missions have that statement?
It was planned, um, ambulance. And HPC, I believe. And then the rest of them, they're not having it.
So are we adding it to all the ones that didn't have it, and?
Taking it away.
Taking it out.
So if there's no business, there's no meeting?
Correct.
And they're not.
But, I guess, if, there's already a statement for that, but all right, so.
Just so we're not saying that it's something, and it's not, it's not, if there's no business.
Okay. I, I keep playing.
It's like a double digit.
Okay.
Anybody having another issue with this first reading? Okay?
Move to approve.
Well, actually, it's a public hearing.
Sorry, public hearing again. I didn't close the last one, so we'll have to let the director stand. Um. So we'll open a public hearing regarding these changes at seven thirty, and we'll welcome any public comment for those online, if you're still with us. We just have changes to our commission language, you'll see in the agenda packet. We wanna make sure that, for instance, if we require monthly meetings, but then we have no business, and we don't hold those meetings, that we're not in. You know, we're not, not following the description of our commission's duties. Anyone have any comments about that, or any staff members, you guys are staffing these commissions? Makes sense to me. I'll call for any public comment, thank you both. I'll call one more time for any public comment related, or related to these code changes. Here now, I'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-one. All right, and now, um, this is the nuisance ordinance that we just described, and Christie's done a lot of work, she's been very patient. Thanks, Christie.
No, you're welcome. So you guys want me to just walk through my memo?
Sure, I do, it's very, it's very well crafted, so I think everybody's done their homework, but just for the public benefit.
Sure, sounds great, so, um, I heard the city's request last month. Um, I've done some research with, uh, other draft ordinances. I've, I've researched, um, nineteen other communities, plus the league of Minnesota cities, to try to understand. What's going on here with our nuisance ordinance? And really determine that, um. We have some deficiencies, both in terms of how we're defining nuisances, and all the lists of nuisances that there possibly could be out there. But also largely that we're missing the bulk, sort of, in how we, we manage, um. The, the process of procedures and abatements, which Mike talked about in your previous. Discussion that really could use some tidying language, um, that we can go through, so. The, the league of Minnesota cities is kind of largely where I, I kept this nuisance ordinance, if you guys have copies in your agenda. But we, they cover several different sections. First is public nuisances affecting health, which is kind of, we, we have some, some. Areas of that in our previous, our current ordinance. We also have morals and decencies, we have peace and safety, um, there's a section on noise. Section on parking and storage, and then, um, a whole section just on innocable, um, motor vehicles. Um, as you guys could guess, these, these nuisance issues happen to lots of cities, lots of counties in the state. It's, it's kind of a, a difficult procedure, as we've seen in the last few months, just in this particular project, for everyone. Um, we're not reinventing the wheel here. So in updating this, um, like I said, not only are we updating sort of the potential language, which the league has largely said, these are the, kind of, the six main topics that we need to talk about. But also a huge checks in on abatement procedures, enforcement process, and outlining the details. For like the property owners, the appeal process, cost recovery. Assessing, um, serving notices, so this whole thing gets managed, um, in the league, and I, I copied a lot of information from Winona, so. Lots of smart attorneys have, have crafted this ordinance to try to make it a little easier for us to walk through. Um. Um, in the end here, like I said, we, I, I researched nineteen other ordinances. Um, city ordinances out there, both in their nuisance section, but also outdoor storage, just kind of what we're tackling in the previous discussion. Um, I listed all those cities alphabetically, so I won't go through that, but lots of lists from Austin to Zambroda. Um, and then just final, you know, some council actions. Um, and I could take questions about the ordinance itself, if people wanna walk through it, but. Council action is kind of too bold for me, I would recommend that, um, council direct staff, the consultants. Um, Brian and I, and the member else who may have, and Mike. Clarity to continue to review and refine. And prepare this nuisance ordinance for review, and then the option by city council, so take it through the first read, second read, but. I wanna give it at least a month, or, you know, maybe till next month, so Mike has a bit more time to review it, it's, it's. It's a lengthy ordinance, though it's mostly just the league's, uh, ordinance, I wanted to give, um, staff and consultants some time to actually review it. And to, and, and this is kind of an important and to here. But the planning commission really needs to get re-engaged here, and clarify that junkyards are not an acceptable use in town. It's sort of spells it out in two different sections, but I will make that very specific and clear. I also think we need to take outdoor sales to a conditional use permit only, so that we can also tackle this as a CVP. Um, right now, we have some that are permitted, some uses where this is permitted, which just leads to a best, we never get the opportunity to talk about. Screening either walls or fences or landscaping. So I think outdoor sales and outdoor storage has to be managed. And then mixed uses, as we look through this, are also sort of fuzzy. And I've actually got this crafted for. And, and pretty ready for the planning commission this coming month, because I think these are important tidbits that we need to talk to, but. I'd love to have city council request that these specific topics get really reviewed. Um, by, by planning commission would provide a whole lot more specific clarity for issues that kind of got us to where we are with the Benner property. Finally, last but not least here on the second page, I actually kind of tackled my ten cents for the Benner property. Um, and through my review of the nineteen other ordinances that I looked at in the last month. All of them in the southeastern Minnesota area, and the league's model ordinance. Um, all three Benner parcels would have been designated as a nuisance in those cities. Um, they largely have exactly the same junkyard definitions, and, um, would, would come to the same conclusion now. That would be my review, not, um, an attorney's clearly. Um, second, the use of the Benner property. Um, since they have a residential home on it, um. I guess we would have to at least go with the concept that it possibly could have been considered a home occupation, but it's also got a commercial use. Um, it's not an active commercial business, um, with, you know, it, it's. It's a non-active commercial business with incidental outdoor merchandise. Um, so in my opinion, the Benner property would, would have to fall into next use, because it's got both a home and a commercial property. But it's not a commercial property in a traditional sense. Um, but anything outdoors should meet screening criteria. Um, for reasons that we've all witnessed tonight. Um, it just has to happen, and that's why, if I put my planning hat back on here, we really need to manage outdoor uses in a way that we can manage them. It can't just be allowed or permitted without some direction and guidance from the city. So I don't, I don't wanna be here again. Um, then in terms of outdoor storage, um, there's just a second highlight here. All of our researched codes with outdoor storage standards would have required screening with fencing or landscaping if storage is visible to public roads. Or residential properties. If not an active part of the business, um. That's where I really wanted, we, we had some discussion saying, what happens if it's a Ford dealership? Or, you know, we have incidental stuff happening at, um, hardware stores where they sell. Uh, wheel barrels, or whatever they have outside incidentally, and they bring it in, and that's true. Um, and we can, we can work with that in the, in the active outdoor storage ordinance. And I put that here saying, you know, uh, uh, an honest. Commercial, you know, a commercial business outright with typical indoor offices, sales space, employees. Off-street parking, i.e. the typical Ford dealership, or hardware store. Um, those folks largely lock up their merchandise in the evenings, or they light it up at nights, um, we all know what they look like. Um, given that the Benner parcels currently is a residential and a home occupation and a commercial use. It's visible, unfortunately, on all three sides by public roadways. That's another disadvantage for this property. Um, we've got Fifth Grant Boulevard, West Gambi Avenue, and Public Gallery. In addition to residential parcels that are all around it. So outdoor storage without screening, without hedge, without something. Is leading towards where we are with this current property. Um, finally, just a brief discussion about performance standards. Um, we have twenty-three specific performance standards in our zoning code, so this would not, adding outdoor storage is not atypical. Um, which is something I wanted to highlight. We, we cover a wide range of topics. In the performance standards, from, everything from home occupations to minimum housing standards, fences and walls. We, we've all been familiar with major traffic generators and solar gardens, just to name a few. Um, we would, I would like the opportunity to add outdoor storage to that list. So that we can, we can further provide performance standards. For outdoor storage issues. I'm gonna work with the, the council on that. And per Minnesota state statute. Um, we cannot, um, we cannot rescind uses for things that aren't working in neighborhoods, but we can require. Community properties, we can require properties within our jurisdiction to live up to the performance standards in our code. So if we have additional properties within town that have outdoor storage that are leading towards nuisances. We can require that they live up to the performance standards that we designed this year. That was kind of it.
They have your.
Thoughts for me?
Just to summarize one more time. So what's here is, you all will continue and see the updated nuisance ordinance, that's a different part from our planning and zoning, I haven't had this explained to me. So you'll see that, and then some of the other details on performance standard. I've just got, I'll say Christie of, you know, everyone's fine with. Okay. Well anyways, I think there'll be some just about the planning commission and not, you know, the illnesses that, that are complying, but. Um, I've read through the, the model nuisance, and I think that would help give us some specifics. I mean, honestly, the man enforcing a lot of this is Sergeant Wagner here, I'm sure he'd appreciate. And, you know, some more clarity with the process. This here's what you do, um, but a lot, again, I'll just repeat, a lot of what you never saw, this man is handling, so.
Yeah.
I have a new appreciation for what, what he does behind the scenes that would never even come here, but I think this will be nice for Randy as well, and. Uh, give some clarity, so. Yep.
Great, thank you for that, Christie.
Oh, you're welcome.
Did, any questions about any of the items?
Oh, I was waiting to pick this up, sorry. I can't see me from the screen, so.
We can.
I'm not looking through the television.
Hi, I think I will see you, uh, we really appreciate this work, thank you. Thank you, Heather, for this.
Everyone, I'm okay with proceeding.
Yeah.
The studio is. Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, he was a bit underwise.
To give stack.
Just, yeah, guys, so.
That's, that's all, I mean, I would make that motion.
Okay, I'll give it, we've got a motion a second, all of the further discussion on that. All those in favor?
I'll just say, for those in the audience who this might impact, there will be future public hearings if we present an ordinance that you'll be able to read through and make comments, so this is just. There'll be opportunity, it'll be in the paper, and public hearing, it's coming, coming up.
Stack's still working on it to get to the level of planning council, so planning, having foot, those meetings are public, then we'll have hearings.
Yeah, my only recommendation would be all of it to come together at once.
Sure.
So planning recommendations that will change, and then we'll.
Yeah, I think that was the intent.
So we can kind of see that.
Yeah.
Ordinances are only passed here, though, they're not passed.
Yes.
Right.
Correct.
We'll just get. Maybe better to plan and.
Yeah, we would, yeah, yeah, that's right. It would.
Right, we have a motion a second, all those in favor say aye.
All right.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you very much. Okay, now this is the first read to those changes that we discussed before, so back to those. Commission-related changes for anybody, uh, from the, from the public listening in. Little bit of changes to the ambulance commission, planning commission, heritage preservation commission. Essentially the membership and kind of responsibility of those commission members. My only comment, just having been a. HPC member, is we would always love these, these individuals who, if we can find them, are to be members of our, uh, of our body, that would be anybody. Uh, manager in sale of real estate, you've had lots of real estate, worked in those years, you just don't have anybody right now. Structural plan, they have designed the buildings or homes, and the preservation of plan, they actually still have to discuss. All right. So. We don't need any more action, we're gonna have second read of that, that was so exciting. Um, and now our park board, this was. Uh, the substance of a prior meeting, you have, um, park board ordinance change, so that a member of the park board can either be a resident. Or, if he's a property owner in the city, yes, resident or property owner. I'm sorry, just give a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, and then, um, I don't know, this just came to Wendy, I think, we have, um, been contacted by Ramsey County to see if anyone on the city council wants to name. Themselves or another, nominate someone else to be on the Great River Rail Commission, I get all that information, it's very easy to get, I don't know if anybody else gets that. Uh, they need, I don't know how, do they say how often they need?
Every other month.
Every month, and did they say if it's virtual?
No.
It used to be.
I don't think so.
Okay.
You can go somewhere.
Yeah, I think you might have to go St. Paul. So if anybody wants to nominate themselves, we'll look into that, and, uh.
It's been.
Right.
Yeah, you don't have to stop, it's a lot, in a lot of it's.
I guess what's the benefit for us?
The impact of passing, you know, in the Chris Patrachain, I mean, it's nice to be informed, and they do a good job of that, you can Google like. YouTube videos of what their decisions look like, and the impact of the greater benefit. I have never felt like we have a lot to say about it, just given that we don't have to stop.
We felt, I don't know, what would be, there, there's no sense, but it was a nice call call, so.
Fair, nice, but I did.
Okay.
All right, and then we need you to appoint board members for the, uh, board of generalization, last time we had. Alright, and then we need to appoint board members for the, uh, board of generalization, last night we had Brian, Jeff, and Dean, and we have to have one member from each, uh, ward, is that to save us with the other?
When is the meeting in April, you know?
It's, it, it hasn't been sent yet, yes, so I'll get notification usually in March from Jesse, I think, I'll send a sheet one from each.
I'll back up Tim if he can, for some reason.
My turn on mine, I guess.
Yeah.
I'll do a job.
Alright, spirit of cooperation, okay, so I heard Tim, Jean, John, uh, we can, anybody want to make a motion to appoint those members?
I'll make a motion, thank you.
We have a motion by Tim, second by Brian, further discussion, all those in favor say aye, opposed say no, thanks for that, everybody feels so, well supported. And then the February donations are very generous, to the library, two thousand four hundred and six dollars from Don Merrill Mac, um, fifty dollars from Evan Hubbard, a hundred dollar donation, twenty-five dollars in memory of Janie Dridesdale by friend Diane Scholberg, twenty-five dollars in memory of Dirkley Walter by Linda Brainerd, a hundred dollars in memory of Eugene Bunny Woodley by anonymous donor, another hundred dollar donation in memory of Dirkley Walter by an anonymous donor, two thousand dollars in honor of Laura Van Pery, from the Joan Elaine Coleman Family Foundation, fifty dollars from Diana Ginkgo, for the police, two hundred and fifty dollars from Richie and Lori Marsop for safety training equipment, and the fire department, sixteen thousand dollars in the Wawa, Wawa Shop Firemen's Relief Association, do we have a motion to approve the?
I'll move, so I can.
There's an echo, I'll just give it to Jeff, thanks, Jean's been voted for, Tim for a second, by, uh, Jeff, for the discussion, all those in favor say aye, opposed say no. And then in terms of our updates, we should have our financials email to us, and then we'll look at that at twenty, February twenty-five date, at three PM, for the strategic planning conversation.
And new building.
Yep. And then.
Rory, twenty fifth.
When that's up here, see how? What's the location?
Yeah, would you, do you guys have thoughts, you like the library?
Or you like to present, I don't know, doesn't, I'm.
Uh, I'll let you know.
Okay.
It'll, it'll probably be kind of a different sort of meeting, we've all previewed some of this. I understand the strategic plan is just re-looking at the goals, and I'll bring some suggestions, not that we want to do small groups and vision boards and things like that.
Maybe we'll be inspired, to this, extent where you're interested in it.
Okay.
By the way, that's looking, it sounds like it's looking good for most participants. Very good.
Okay, I chose an earlier time to get.
Thank you, yes.
Done earlier, so.
And then, uh, any other, any other options before we adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Tim, I, Jean, all those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Thank you very much.